Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. I'd like to welcome everyone here today for our October 13th Board Commissioners Meeting, Monthly Meeting. And I was asked to make mention of the walnuts hitting the roof here this afternoon. It's not gunfire going off, it's just walnuts hitting the roof. So don't be alarmed when you hear that. And we'll go ahead and start out with our prayer and our pledge. And we have Commissioner Walker's going to lead us in her prayer, and Commissioner Green will lead us in our pledge.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for all your many blessings. We thank you for another opportunity to meet as a board to discuss the business, dear Lord. And I just pray you give us wisdom and guidance, and dear Lord, that we will make the right decisions for those we represent. Dear Lord, we want to thank you, dear God, for the historic peace agreement we've seen today in the Middle East. And I just pray that your will be done with those nations and those people, dear Lord, that are affected by that. And dear God, we just give you the thanks and the praise, honor, glory for all you've done. In your name we pray. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here, motion, we approve the minutes.
Same age.
Second. Motion, second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right here, motion, we approve the agenda for tonight.
Same age.
We have a... Go ahead, Mr. President. We have a... One little slight change. I think there's going to be someone else speaking on the item B, no item A tonight. It's going to be Jeff Hayden. But the other thing is on the Historic Carson House, Miss Teresa is going to be speaking, giving a brief speech at this time, and then she will finish it during the mealtime. So that's the only change. So we have a motion, second. Any additions, corrections? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Start now with item A on our board appointments. We have the 2027 property reappraisal update, and we have Tandy here to give us that. What was yours, ma'am?
Thank you very much. Good to have you today. Just wanted to... Okay, two on the reevaluation process. We are coming along. Jeff is here representing our firm, but still with that reappraisal, he'll be giving you some more details. I think we've provided you with some numbers across the table. Everything seems to be going well. Most of the public has been very receptive. We have... We are getting a lot of cards sent into us. They're leaving door hangers and everything, and we are getting some cards sent back on those. But for the most part, everyone's been understanding about everything. As you'll see on the notice, as of this past Friday, we have had 11,258 parcels of the 32,703 that have been visited, and they have taken images of over 6,000 of those. And they feel like they're on the schedule, everything's going well for them. And they're already pulling some of the sales and for market review for that, for everything going on. And then they will... But they will primarily set the scheduled values that will be presented to y'all later in the year... Or later next year, not this year, sorry, based on the 2026 sales that we have next year. I'm going to let Jeff step up if y'all have any questions for him or anything. He'll be... He'll be more able to answer those questions.
Jeff, I've got one, Jeff. So on the McDowell GIS, are those... If you've been to the property already, are those images updated on the GIS currently as you go through the process?
I do not know. There are a few that have been updated. I doubt it, because what we're taking and doing is we've got a surface pro tablet, it's got your property card on it, each individual property in the communities, and roundabout. And when we pull it up off your GIS map, it brings up that property card, and then we take that image, and it goes ahead and attaches it with that. So until we can upload with y'all or do a, you know, a live update or something, it's so much towards the end of the job, whatever you want, we'll get there. I mean, we do have a tablet, if you ever needed to see any or anything, we're going to gladly pull it for you, and whatever you need.
Are y'all making changes as you go through, just to the one site, you just reference the tablet, and then you're going to download them all when they become effective in the board votes later, next year?
Right. What will happen is, we're going through right now, looking for changes, additions, structures that's been torn down, or whatever gone, and getting that corrected, and then we'll go through with that entry, make those changes in the system. And what will happen too, there'll be a new reevaluation file created here soon, and that'll be where the changes will be made, and it rolls over into y'all's live books, you know, into 2027. But, you know, as many as we can find, in kind of what we're doing, of course, we're working with Tandy and her department if we need to get that turned over to her system.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah, of course. Okay, thanks, sir.
You're welcome.
Mr. Ray Teat.
I guess you know that it's going to destroy the shingles on the roof. You know, I went to buy walnuts at the grocery store, and I was thinking, we ought to be able... We ought to harvest them, being walnuts are so high.
Yep. Another revenue, another source of revenue for y'all, ain't it?
Okay, moving on now to the vision government solutions. We have Jeff Hayden here with us. We just... Go over there, Jeff. I didn't know who that was. American 250 Committee. So we have Chairman Doug Swain here to give a presentation on that.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. It's good to be with you. And I want to begin with some thank yous. First of all, thank you to the Commission for setting up our America 250 Committee, so that we can try to make a fuss over this commemoration. I'd like to thank County Manager Wooton for applying for a state grant a long time ago, so that we could have staff support from Madeline. And then, of course, I would like to thank Madeline, who has put in long hours supporting the committee, both during working hours and after hours as well, and she always does it so well and so cheerfully. I know you enjoy working with her. I'd like to thank Ron Harmon for representing the county on the committee. I'd like to thank Vice Chairman Green, who shows his support by sitting in on our meeting, so he has a sense of how we operate. And I'd like to thank Commission Chairman Brown, who has participated in a couple of our events out here at the Carson House, and has delivered some stirring proclamations from the county. So we really appreciate that. We've got some committee members in attendance, so why don't you folks stand if you would just a second? This is the America 250 Committee, and they've been working for about a year and a half now, so appreciate their efforts. All right. Also, since we're gathered here at the Carson House, let's talk a little bit, just a little bit, about America 250 history. Now, of course, the Carson House itself was not standing 250 years ago, but John Carson arrived out here on the western North Carolina frontier exactly 250 years ago. He would have arrived here summer of 1775. So exactly 250 years ago would have been getting settled in right now. The gentleman who built the log cabin that we recently added to the property, William Moore, he had already been here for about 10 years before John Carson arrived, and he was commissioned as a captain of the local militia. And John Carson served in the local militia, in the local militia, under Captain William Moore. And again, almost exactly 250 years ago now, shortly after Moore organized his local company of militiamen, they went out a statewide call to head east to take on the British and the Tories who were gathering in the Cape Fear area. And if you read the Revolutionary War pension applications of a lot of the local folks who served, they'll talk about the Cross Creek Expedition. And you know, that's what they called... Before Fayetteville was called Fayetteville, it was Cross Creek. So they were heading towards Fayetteville. There was a decisive battle on, I think it was February the 27th, 1776. So just a few months from now, there was a decisive battle, the Battle of Moore's Creek Bridge, when the Patriots defeated the British and the Tories. And because of that battle and the Patriot defeat, there was very little fighting in North Carolina for the next three years. Now, our guys, they were actually traveling mostly by foot, 300 miles east, and they didn't make it there in time for the battle. But they heeded the call, and they were going to participate. All right. Our America 250 Committee's approach, we basically followed a two-pronged approach to what we're doing. One is, we will sponsor events and try to get the public to come join us, participate in our events. We've had two very good educational events out here at the Carson House. On both of those occasions, the public event was followed the next day by events for schoolchildren. And we've had hundreds, hundreds of schoolchildren to come out both times and learn the history as well. We brought a program about North Carolina's first state constitution out to Old Ford on Constitution Day. That's another one that schoolchildren participated in. And we're sponsoring a speaker series at the old Marion Train Depot, one speaker a month between now and next July the 4th. So come out and listen to those. They're all good presentations. But we're also taking the America 250 to where folks are already gathering. So where we have community events on the schedule, we're setting up a booth. Madeline is out there with our material and trying to spread the word about America 250. Today, we bring you a request for funding. I think you have copies of our request. Rather than go through that item by item, I'll just ask if you have any questions about the items on that list.
Mr. Chairman, whenever you're ready for a motion, I'm making a motion to approve it based upon staff identifying the revenue to handle the funding request.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
That is super. And I'll say, we do have the possibility of funding from other sources, so what we've asked you for is kind of an up to amount, and if we're able to get funding from other sources, we won't draw that much. One other thing, just for a second here. Folks often use these commemorations to do some kind of a big legacy project that stays with the community, that you can look back on, onto. And our committee has had some very interesting discussions about possible legacy projects for McDowell County, some of which would take advantage of some historic opportunities that are available to us now. And I just want to say that we hope to come back to you early in the new year, early next year, and talk about a legacy project that we can all get behind. All right? Thank you so much for your support.
Let's give Doug a hand for his knowledge. Okay. Next, moving along down to C, we have the Historic Carson House update, and we're going to ask Miss Teresa to come up.
Shadolin.
Shadolin, I suppose, for instance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board of Commissioners, it's a pleasure to see you again today. Members of the audience, it's also welcome sight to have you out here. I would like to start off first by recognizing my board members that are here today. If they would please stand, I may introduce them. Mr. Doug Swain, who is our treasurer. I have Janice Pierce, who is our partner president. Karen Dark, who is our vice president. I have Alice Strecker, who is my emeritus member. I have Pat Marlowe, who I could not do anything without, and I promise you, he swept all the leaves here and blew them this morning, but they're back. I have over here, I have Penny Cross. And is Doc responding here? No, he's not here. Okay. All right. So that's the ones that are here today, and so thank you very much. I couldn't do it without them. As a thank you for all your support that you do for the Carson House and for having the vision for educating children about local history. We have a resident artist now that's working with the Carson House. We're going to be having several. If you go to our new website, you'll be able to see our resident artists, which are local artists. We also are going to be starting authors. I collected numbers of those. I made a lot of great connections at the Mountain Glory Festival and networked quite a bit on Saturday. So we're going to be having resident artists as well. But Madeline has these for you. This is a depiction of the historic William Moore Cabin, and on the back is the Carson House. So she has one of those to give to you, so that you can have that and pin it to your office and remember us, Father. Okay. So my report is a little bit different than what I gave to you before, but I did. I wanted to talk to you about some of the missions and some of the strategic plans and visions that we've had. Education and museum. Our museum and visitor center, we've decided as a board, they're going to rename that the Heritage Center. And as we take a tour later on, we'll give you the vision for why we want to do that. But we're going to be opening and having our grand opening April 16th. Our museum exhibits, part of it will be finished, but the other part, offices will be ready, special collections. But we will be getting everything finally ready by July, July, August. We have completed, and this has been exhaustive, a couple of my partners in it, we completed an entire inventory of all of our artifact collection, which was in the hundreds and hundreds and hundreds, making a complete list and getting an artifact collection and inventory of what we have, as well as all of our genealogical books and collections. Those will be moved, the collections, into the new library. So that is one thing that I'm really excited about. Very excited about the William Moore Cabin. I thank you, Doug, for... He helped out with the presentation that we did a couple of weekends ago. It was very exciting, because we had live demonstrations going on. We actually had the fire going, and that was very, very exciting for us, and schoolchildren got to go in and see that, and that was exciting. So if you'd like to spend the night there, please see me after the meeting, and we'll book your time, because it would be available for you, but it will be a ladder mattress on a bed. So, yes, very disturbing. So education-wise, we did have the OBT-A. We worked with them quite extensively. Martha Jordan, our former executive director, was able to procure... We had numbers, we had a dozen or more different people who came around and did historic interpretations. We had close to 500 children. We have partnered back with Good Shaw at the high school, and he's going to work with us on a junior historian program, and getting that established, at which point we will try and work down the future. The goal is to have local scholarships, a Carson House scholarship for students, and perhaps work out and do some things with the teachers and everything, and have teacher workshops here at the Carson House for local history. We do have a group of children coming in, about 150 this Friday, and we have more from Pleasant Gardens coming in the end of the month. So that's been really great, to be able to work with the local schools and establish those connections. Well, I will tell you, one of my chief goals was to try and establish local partnerships with all of the groups in and around the county. So I have met all of them. Destination, McDowell. I've worked extensively with the McDowell County Historical Society in re-establishing a partnership with them. They do have some of the original artifacts that belong to the Moore Cabin, and so they'll be helping us display those during seasonal hours. They also have the Ninety Greenlee Collection, that we were going to hope to have a Ninety Greenlee Day to be able to look at those scrapbooks. So that's something that's in the future. Another partnership that we've established is we've been working with the Lindell Caverns to establish a buy one, get one, or a two for one, because they're right here together. And I've contacted every charter company in North Carolina, and we are working to try and establish some partnerships, like if you're going to see the gingerbread competition, stop by and see us at the Carson House. You know, those one-day events that seniors go out on. I will tell you, other future ideas are having a first responders, a family day here at the Carson House, to reach out to them and thank them for their service, having seniors come out and work. The list goes on. There's so many that I just could not name them all. But the idea is that we genuinely want to support our community, and in return, we hope that our community supports us. My favorite part about the Carson House, of course, is the history, the historic preservation of it and the artifacts. And along with that is the research in genealogy. I dare say that I probably related to half of you on the board, because I've been doing my family genealogy, and I'm related to just about everybody. I even found out I was related to Chuck Abernathy, so.
Mother's kid, she better clap.
Captain Moore, his ninth great-grandmother was my, you know, sixteenth. So we have connections. We don't think about that a great deal, even though Shadolin is like this foreign-sounding name. The local name was Hughes, and that is just over the mountain. My family came from Yancey County, my dad's family. So we have a lot of ties close to here. We are working actively with many of the descendants from the Carson House. We're going to be establishing a Carson House Descendants Society that you can only join if you have Y-DNA. That means you guys, we have your DNA, and we can actually prove through DNA that you are a direct descendant. So we're going to make a little separate society for them. We have several groups next year, the Bergens and the Lidl's, and we have several of our African-American community groups that are going to come in, and we're hoping to help establish them to be able to research their family roots as well. So we have a lot of projects in store. I just can't wait to move into my new office, and you'll get to see part of that afterwards. So we'll be doing a tour. It's been a pleasure. It's been a whirlwind of three to four months, well, since, what, June 1, somewhere around there, maybe after Buck Creek. But hit the ground running, and it's been a pleasure. And so it's a beautiful drive down the mountain every morning. I get to say a prayer. I get to listen to music, and I get to drive up this beautiful driveway to this gorgeous property every single day. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
She is certainly a pleasant lady. Okay, moving on to the old business. Item A, I'm going to begin starting out as the planning updates. Mr. Wooton?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I have two items under planning updates. The first item, last month, we had Mr. Ron Harmon from Planning Department present to you a draft ordinance that is essentially the mobile home park ordinance with some additions on it, including proposed regulations for tiny homes, RVs, associated campground. Since that time, there has been some outreach in the community to ask for additional time to provide input on that draft before we get to the hearing stage. And so staff's recommendation at this point is to essentially send the ordinance back to the planning board, allow them to schedule some time for, does it take the property owners, business owners to come in, share some concerns directly, and then let the planning board consider those and send something back to you that needs to be tweaked and optimized. So I'd ask that for a moment, a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we have the draft RV campground ordinance go back to the planning board, and affected campground owners have an opportunity to come to the planning board meeting and state their concerns.
Sir. Any other discussion?
I have had some calls and some conversations with some of those folks, and I thought it's fair to do that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any input?
Okay. The one other item I mentioned last month also in an area, East Semirian on Jacktown Road, where there is essentially a mobile home park that has been abandoned, and we have been through this at least one other time before on a large scale. So at that time, you authorized that property. The deadline for action was September 30. If there was no action, and so we have been tending quotes, the deadline for those quotes tomorrow, and so you've already given the authorization to proceed with the lowest qualified debit. I just wanted to give you an update on that. As soon as we hit that deadline tomorrow, we'll make sure the lowest asks what they need for insurance, the bond they need to proceed, and...
What's an anticipated timeline for clean up, the big cleanup?
I think, I was saying, correct, that I think I have three or four that have communicated their interest in providing quotes. And all the communication has been starting from 30 days, which is, these days is pretty good. After the cleanup, again, what will happen is the county will then take all the costs, the cleanup, the disposal, everything else, and attach those in the lien on that property. The property owners still has the ability to pay for that cleanup cost, but if they do not, the tax collector can proceed with the foreclosed sales.
Would the open bid be the amount that was owed to county?
Absolutely. And any other taxes, anything else?
Okay. Let's move on to the water system project. Mr. Wooton?
Yes, sir. A few updates on some of our projects. I really lean on our engineers to give us some hard dates on some of these things, and say it is as good as there were to understand. So first, in the Nevo area, the East End Project, which is around Marion Lake Club, started August 4. According to the engineer, the scheduled completion date is April 2026. And so we'll make sure that community understands that timeline. Nevo Phase 2A and 2B, they're still under construction, but we're mid-October now, just what they told us the completion date would be. And so we're right at that finishing stage there. I did hear from staff generally in the Nevo area, which is mostly the 2A and 2B section, which is Old Number 10, Royal Park Road, that area, Mobile Chapel, et cetera. We have 86 pending applications for service. So we're waiting for, you know, the final little things to get done, certifications and things, but people are top of the list in that one area of the title. What we're understanding, the start of the project, and so it's good to see it on the back end, and say...
What, actually, what's our approximate total number of water customers now?
We're a hair over 400, and I have about 415. And so there's 86, which is over, about over 500. The East End itself has approximately 85 customers. And so when all the work is said and done in the Nevo area, we should be probably 550 in a year, probably around 600. Considering we were about 300 about a year and a half ago, that's a pretty good growth in that area. Just a couple more updates in that area. Phase 3, which is mostly Landoff Road area. We have an approval in hand from NCBDQ, which is usually the State Department that picks them off. I mentioned this last month, NCBDT has the approach agreement agreement. I mentioned this last month, NCBDT has the approach agreement in Raleigh. And so I have a review. I've asked our district engineer, Mr. Young, to expedite that and all possibly call those folks and see if they can push that ahead. Just as a reminder, this is paid for by state funding that is via the American Rescue Plan Act. And so there is a deadline in December 26. If you're not done, too bad, so sad, then money has to be spent by that date. And so as much as I'm able to put this date down, do it. Then Exit 90, a small project there. We're waiting on one hurdle, which is environmental. Our engineers working on a very small project that are working in the hopes and businesses in that area. And then shifting gears towards West Marion Elementary. Again, you've got direction to focus right now on serving the school quarter. And so within the last week or so, we received the 90% plans. And the percentage just means we have seen the entire loop of Sugar Hill Marlboro Design Bill on paper for a very long time. But the 90% is being given a little more detail. They have responded more, say, to our feedback on specifics. And so the 90% is more or less the last review for us on the staff level. And so Mr. Riddle and his staff, Mr. Snyder are reviewing those plans. And if we don't like the materials, now's the time. If we don't like the meat place, now's the time. So they're going through and sending those comments back. And then those plans will go back for 100%, of course. And that is what we submit to the state. I did speak with the engineer on this Thursday or Friday this past week. The environmental review will start. The paperwork assigned then in the last week from our council of governments. That could take about three months, which is a delay. But the next bullet item, as I've indicated, you endorse applying for funding for the Marlboro Road and Zion Hill Road extension. The good news for that environmental is while it will take some time, it will include this hopeful work. So hopefully, it all will work out. And we have heard Mr. Boyd here and I would saddle in to putting that together, that application. We will know it in February. So my hope is we get that notification on this grant when we proceed it. And our environmental is more or less ready to go around that time. And then we can submit all the final plans because we'll all be ready to help with the supply in Raleigh. And then we can go to bid, do it all, save.
How do we score on the grant, Ashley? I mean, point wise?
We had, I think, about 45 points or so, which, based on some feedback from other folks that applied, it was a pretty good point total. So one of the areas we benefited in that area, actually, the entirety of the road, roads of Marlboro and Zion Hill were in math area where it was disadvantaged, was the terminology used. Those two roads, thankfully, for this area, disadvantaged. And so that gave us 25 points out of the game. And so that almost doubled our points. More so, just right here. So hopefully, it's competitive. We won't know again until February on that. We just kind of hold our looks tight as far as the quotes there. But fingers crossed, there is another opportunity if that one's not funded. And based on your prior direction, if this isn't funded, we're just full steam ahead of serving the school. And we'll just reapply for the next round for the other part of the.
What we want to do is to keep the water park because I'm confident the school board just wants it to be the school.
Right.
So the phase one would be for that. And then phase two would be the public grant money that we could possibly.
That's right. Because it can be bid.
If it did, we don't.
Yes, sir. We do have a couple of, I've talked about just updates. We have started our asset and more assessment project with McGill Associates. And this, again, mostly focused on the Nevo area because it's where we have a current water system. But this effort will help us actually grow elsewhere for some capital planning and math. And I also mentioned, we are working on a small partnership grant with the city of Marion and the town of Old Ford on essentially post and lean cooperation. And that is mostly, there's been some ambiguity on that discussion so far. But most of it has been, how can the three utility systems work together after disaster? And prepare anyone for that. But also, are there other opportunities beyond the cooperation we already have outside of disaster planning? And so we have had a discussion with Environmental Finance Center and the University School of Government. They are willing and able to help facilitate this with this free community. So that's exciting. It might just be one sheet of paper that says do this, this and this. It could lead to other discussions for partnership, free systems, communities.
Mr. Wood, I'm listening next to the board, the fact that we do have land purchased already, paid for. We've got, we've been through the process of having certifications done on that land and for a future water intake facility. And the city operates off two creeks. And that lake's pretty big. And so I think it'd be beneficial as part of the three groups getting together to have a conversation and state, you know, a long-term plan would be, because when you think farther than where we're at now, down the road, would it be beneficial for the city and the county to jointly own a water filtration plant and apply to the state to pay to have one bill? I don't know. Bring Old Ford in, but we need to start thinking long-term for our people as far as that discussion.
So I have other ones.
Okay. All right, let's move on to capital projects. Mr. Wood.
Last month, we talked about some capital items that were more of a future scale, some issues that we have that we're looking to address. And so next month, we'll review some of that that we talked about last month. In the meantime, we're talking about some ongoing projects that either in the construction stage themselves are about to start. And it's, if I don't talk, sometimes there's just not a lot of action going on with something, and I just hate to fill up an agenda. But it is obviously good for you to know what's going on as well as the public and things that are maybe for staff, just kind of get routine about. So one, start off is our transfer station. If you go all the way to the top of the hill where the current shelter building is, keep going around and you can see a new concrete pad that has been built in a routine wall. That, again, that is part of our transfer station rehabilitation project. If you remember where we talked about some months ago, what we're building right now was a temporary, it will not have a shelter on it. It will just be a concrete pad essentially and a wall. Where once that is completely done, that is where we will load the waste for a number of months. So once that is finished, we will park the trailers there. We'll have people dispose the waste there and we'll load the trailers there. The existing shelter will be closed at that time. It means a major rehabilitation. The floor will be essentially removed and replaced. The sidewalls will be improved if not removed. And then at the end of the floor, where it overhangs with the trailers part, that will be refreshed as well because it is gone once it was put there a few years ago. So that work will take some time. But once that is all complete, that temporary floor will be repurposed for other uses, maybe loading scrap metal and sort of thing. If not, it's going to go to waste, it'll be used for other purposes. And so that, again, as we talked, that might be disruptive for the end user because that temporary floor, it does have a smaller loading capacity than the permanent floor. But we'll move as fast as we can and move that. We do have a new wheel loader that is pushing the waste and say. So we'll keep you posted about that. We'll put information out as we need to do, say, about closures there or whatever. The next site is the Universal Technology Park grading. If you happen to be, I actually saw it on Barnes Road recently, or anywhere south of town, you might have noticed some burning. That was some wood waste permitting burning that was happening with some of the trees that have been cleared there. This is a second building site that is being built, again, that we've authorized some months ago for industrial commerce, pardon my pardon, but industrial warehouse, et cetera, there in Universal Technology Park. This is a road grading project that has been paid for by the Golden Lady Foundation. The bid was a little over a million dollars. Again, no county funds in that project, which is wonderful. When it's all said and done, it will be road graded and say, it'll be marketed. It's already, it's been quietly marketed now. But whatever company might want to come in, they would have the ability to get graded like they were asked for one half more. Same here at Universal. I've also authorized some time ago, now almost a year, some restoration work on the creek that flows through that property. This is, again, state funding that is going to do that work. We were having some erosion around our infrastructure there. So state funding will secure it. There will be some noticeable changes to that creek that wraps around that property. This funding also repaired the culvert that goes into the driveway a bit some time ago. So that came along in a long time. I have communicated with the college and we'll speak to our tenants there. We don't anticipate any impact to our tenants or the college operations. We just make sure they're aware of what's going on. And then finally, did get some questions from our Dow Trail Association partner recently on our freeway extension project, which will be somewhat south of here when it's all said and done. This is also known by some letters and numbers EV-5916. So sometimes you might see that. That is the DUT project code. This is a project that has been in the works at least four years. It is federal funding going through the state that the county is providing some match dollars with some grants we have received for that purpose. We have been in design and permitting for about three years. It's a long time when you're working around the waterway, especially with federal money. The lane did not help us. So part of the project has the freeway going along Tamper World, the former Tamper World Park, and there was a lot of damage from that riverbank. So all of that had to be resurfaced. And so that added about six to nine acres long. And so I do have a schedule of your packets that should hopefully get on track. But it's still happening. It's just taking a very long time. So wherever we've gotten questions, we've sent that information back to our partners. So appreciate that it's still happening. And again, just for folks' reference, we have Greenlee Park off Old Greenlee Road. The county owns and operates that. The goal is to build a freeway extension towards Robey Conley Road and Big Creek as well as going west for a few of the adjacent place roads. Any questions about any of that?
You know, you're talking about the Greenlee property and all that. Have we got, can you update the board on anything going on with the former Tom Johnsons from the Tamper World Park? I drove by there today, coming here, and I thought, it's such a waste, sitting there.
I'm not sure if Mr., I'm sure Mr. Abernathy is somewhere, but I have spoken with him on numerous occasions. I've already gone with development director to ask if he has heard anything directly from the company. I have had some outreach to folks that were here locally right after the announced closure. But for the county manager, it's been radio silence. And so I can't answer any knowledge I have of anything publicly being discussed or even.
People, I was asked, somebody came with me the other day and said they heard we were buying the campground and all that. And I said, I've not heard that.
We've not talked about that, no.
I made the suggestion to Chuck that he talk to them and see if they might be willing to donate it to us for a county fairground, which would be great.
For dollars or free. But there's been no information coming from that corporation in the county.
I think one of them hit me on my ball noggin.
I'd like to take just a second to commend Mr. Wood. If you've been paying attention while you've been going through all of these projects, updates and everything, you've heard a whole lot about federal, state funding and grants and all this stuff. I know that he is constantly searching for money other than taxpayer money. And I know, I know that money eventually comes from taxpayers. But I'm talking about it don't come out of McDowell County general fund. And I appreciate you doing that, you do true taxpayer work.
Thank you. I was trained right. And if there's a larger set of, you said it's taxpayer money. So as a federal state taxpayer, we all need to keep that in mind. But also private funds and foundations and things that are mission aligned, we also look at that.
And to take it on this, I do want to say, Ashley, I appreciate, we've got, you referenced two, what's the official terminology?
Strategic Coordinator and Fellow. Try not to use the word intern.
Okay, gotcha. So, and they've been very active in writing, trying to write these grants to try to obtain some of this money that Lynn mentioned right there. So thanks for bringing them on board and then showing them what they're doing, cutting them loose and trying to bring that money back.
And just a quick shout out again, the Association of County Commissioners is providing Mr. Boyd's work here and they cost the county, which is wonderful.
We pay our dues, they don't?
We do pay our dues. And so it all comes back. And then Ms. Montgomery, there is a small contribution from the county for her effort that primarily is paid for through American Corps funding, through the school government. So we're getting a lot of things for our local people. So they do a great job and they'll recognize and we appreciate that, too.
They certainly do. Okay. Set on that. Okay, move along now to the new business item A. Under it is the Glenwood Christmas Parade approval. Do I hear a motion that you?
So may I?
Second. Discussion on that.
Make sure it's in their parade. It's a good parade.
It is. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item B is the fiscal year 2026 budget update. Mr. Wood.
It's just an update. And I will send you the sales tax report that is typically in there. Did not make the packet, bear it under another stack. So we'll get that emailed back to you that everything else is there. We typically present no amendments this month.
And then straight about it.
Just a few items, mostly housekeeping type things. You have EMS write offs presented to you from our finance department. Our water department has a Nevo leak waiver. Those are pretty routine. The third item, you want to do the first two?
Make a motion to approve the EMS write offs and the Nevo water leak waiver as presented.
All in favor, say aye.
Maybe the three or four, obviously seven, that's okay. The Oakwood resolution. Every, every time that you authorize the expenditure of Oakwood settlement funds, we have to present a resolution with the strategy we are meeting, the funding amount, the recipient, maybe a few other things. And so you've done that a couple of times for either funding that is being retained internally or funding that is being essentially contracted out in the community. Several years ago, you authorized expenditure of funding internally for post-soporte response. That might be supplies and materials, it might be naloxone for supplies being utilized internally to our department. And that was authorized, I think, back in 2023. We had just. We had just been kind of going along as we needed those supplies and using them. We work in partnership with this funding with the NC Department of Justice. They essentially keep all the counties and participating cities honest to make sure everything we're doing is right. And I've been very confident of that over the past seven years. They did say under this, they would like us to have a resolution to go out a few years for these supplies, just to make sure we're authorized and comply with the settlement agreement.
So I move that we extend the oak wood resolution authorization to 2026.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Thank you. And then the fourth item, I put an administrative item because it feels like an internal matter, but it might be a little bit external looking back. Several months ago, we talked about some impact we had had to parking in our DSS facility, the main one there on East Court Street, primarily related to losing a lease on a parking lot nearby where vehicles we owned and operate for our staff there had to move somewhere else. And so you made the really smart call, of course, to move those cars back to our main parking lot. When that happened, I mentioned at the time, what we were seeing as a neighboring business had their employees parking, so we essentially asked them to move and they did respectfully and understood completely. But what we didn't do at the time is limit the parking, the parking lot just to staff and clients. And I, without saying it out loud perhaps, and maybe we didn't recall, I think it was a little bit, let's wait and see how this goes before additional steps you take. I'll say for better, not worse. Of course, we have been able to hire a tremendous amount of staff that we needed where we've had vacancies. And so we have, we do have a few vacancies still in the agency, but not what we have. And so through accommodation, primarily, not even with the county vehicles being there, but primarily filling vacancies, we are generally out of parking a lot of times during the day. And so staff will tell me, I won't leave for lunch because I won't find a way to park when I get back. And so I'll just bring a DJ or whatever. Or more importantly, I can't go to an appointment, not using the DSS car, I can't go to the courthouse or somewhere else and have a guaranteed spot. So we do have an issue still. We have a lot of people working there and clients as well. And so I do have a request to limit during the daylight the business hours to staff and clients only. There will be impact. I don't want you to be surprised. There are probably businesses nearby, whether it's across the street next door, whatever the street might be, that have been using that as a public parking lot. It is owned by a public entity, so that makes sense. So there will be people impacted by that. Also, there's residential development immediately adjacent to our property. Currently, those folks that live there do not have parking on their property. There's very limited opportunity to create parking on their property. They could and they would be impacted if we have business hour only for staff. There's about four or five people that live in those and own next to us that would have to move out of this scenario. So I don't, I don't know another way to carve out certain people and allow for limitation of other people without putting just staff and clients only in this business. But all here is.
How many spaces do we have that could be red carpeted?
When they're not court, there's a pretty good amount there, but when there's some court days, they could be pulled, so it's going to be four, or it's half a court, it's like clerks.
Right beside the Red Cross building, would that be space enough for us to park? Mark DSS vehicles? Give them a permanent space there. It's well near at night where it could be watched.
I think there's enough there along the Red Paulson, the Radio Club, where you could park the cars if you were saying the shit that DSS field over there had in the current lot.
Make sure pretty much on site.
I'll echo in, I like Lynn's idea on that. I do, I'm totally prepared to, per your recommendation, to limit it to people using the facility during the day for sure. And also to expand for staff parking across the road.
I think that, I think that our staff, our employees should have first rights to the parking.
And the house next door, the house next door that's baked in, there is a drive that they could go in there and park two or three cars behind there, possibly two.
I think part of the issue they would have to address, this is getting very specific to their concerns, but it's an old driveway from when either it was a Model T or a C or something, it's had a modern form of it. And so it, that's their problem, right? Not ours, but to make it wider, they would have to encroach on our property perhaps.
Those are rental properties, aren't they?
They're primarily owner occupied, I don't think it's a rental.
Well, you know, if we can help them out, okay, but you know, in general, I think that our parking lots should be provided, you know, our employees should be provided parking lot. I mean, they shouldn't have to walk through blocks to get a parking lot.
And, you know, renters, I think we rent property, a lot of landlords limit the number of cars they can have on the property they rent. I mean, I just had a lady the other day that they had four cars and they were moving in the new locations, they're going to have two cars. So they're going to do something there. And so apartment complexes limit it too. So I mean, it's not, we, I agree with Tony, we don't want to impact anybody in negative manner, of course, but we do need to, that's a DSS facility and we need to take care of our workers and the people using those facilities first. And then if we accommodate anybody else, I agree with Tony, we need to do it. But we need signage, Joe, I think we need signage.
I'd like to proceed with limitation during the day.
I think by consensus, that would be what we'd all want.
What I'll do, just to be a good neighbor, is notify especially the folks that we know are utilizing the lot and give them some heads up. They did give a letter several months ago that we were being impacted and there might have to be.
If there's availability for them, definitely. That's great, that's great.
There had been some discussion before about offering permits or something. Do you want to consider that or come back to that perhaps?
That's a little early for the day, so I might talk about later. I'd love to see the new DSS field in some form with a new parking lot, wouldn't you?
Well, that's, that's the goal, so hopefully it's a temporary situation. But we'll notify those folks and then after some respectful time, but at the time, that's okay.
Good.
I'd like to get a vote on that.
Well, I think we're going by consensus, we can go ahead and vote on it. Does everyone motion to make a move? Say here, second. All in favor, say aye. You're opposed.
Yeah, and again, just to tie up, we do have ordinance that allows the county to regulate parking lots. Just to have a little bit more for a market, I don't want it to be.
All right, let's move along to property tax matters, Mr. Wooten.
We do have refunds, discoveries, releases and motor vehicle refund.
We approve the tax matters. Any discussion? All in favor of that, say aye. Okay. Let's move on now to citizen comments. Mr. Coats, do we have any one signed up?
Yeah, we do.
All right. Now we'll go to commissioner staff reports. Anyone have anything on that? Do I hear a motion?
Sheriff, before you adjourn, so the Carson House is so nice and kind and hosts this meeting every October and the history, just being on this property is amazing. And Doug, I don't know what you do for a living or do for a living, but you should be a history teacher. I mean, you just gave it right out there to us and, and so we appreciate that. And it's our customer, Mr. Chairman, to always return kindness to this board and to this local place. The commissioner's picking up the tab for the meal tonight that we'll have, so I would make a motion that the county pays for the meal tonight.
Second. All in favor, say aye. We are.
Much so, Jerry.
Okay, second. Yep, say aye.
Aye.
All adjourned.